I think it is now. Addendum 10 to this meeting was given in accordance with the Public Meetings Act and Civil Civil law nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty. Said notice was provided in Trenton to Winter High School and was posted in for clerk song, Matthew Rolcolton.
Ms. Blue?
Here.
Ms. Hanson is absent. Mr. Curz?
Here.
Mr. Missouri?
Here.
Mr. Mont Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Stoltz?
Here.
Mayor Pritchard?
Here. Anybody that's following the agenda, you see we did have an executive session earlier, and there was no action taken yet.
There will be action on one, you know, relating to the agreement regarding the property located at two seventy-eight Academy Street.
So there will be action taken?
Yeah, it was on the agenda already.
Okay. Do you mind please rise? Get the girl scouts to lead us in the pledge leading. Anytime you're ready.
(inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. Sorry I caught you by surprise. Council, we have an agenda in front of us. I don't see any changes on my side here. Any changes? Looking for a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Move by Councilman Curz, second by Councilman Stoltz, and Rolcolton.
Mr. Curz?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Mont Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
So carried by the year. We have minutes in front of you, July the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, executive session, looking for a motion to accept them as presented.
So move.
Move by Councilman Mont Barrett?
Second.
Second by Councilman Curz. Any corrections or additions to those names? See if none, then have Rolcolton.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Curz?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Mont Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
July the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, business meeting, for motion to accept them as presented. Move by Councilman Mont Barrett? Second by Councilman Missouri. Any questions or concerns or changes? Mabel Rolcolton.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Curz?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Mont Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
July the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, business meeting, for motion to accept them as presented. Move by Councilman Mont Barrett? Second by Councilman Missouri. Any questions or concerns or changes? Mabel Rolcolton.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Curz?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Mont Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
July the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, business meeting, for motion to accept them as presented. Move by Councilman Mont Barrett? Second by Councilman Missouri. Anything you could add to that?
Well, there's a lot more, but speaking of, there's a lot more, but...
Tell me, tell us about it.
Okay, well, I think since two thousand eleven, many years after we started the hanging basket and the in-ground plan of the two years, which we all, I hope, appreciate and support, thank you very much, the Girl Scouts came forth under the leadership of Deb.
I'm Jen DeGrae.
Oh, Jen, right. Who's Deb?
She was, I believe, the one who was helping plan the defense.
Oh, okay.
And she's with our service unit.
But anyhow, Jen and her trusty group of Girl Scouts, and this is every year since two thousand eleven, they've been getting on plan. I have to say, on the way over, I thought, by tender age, I've been involved in lots of voluntary groups made up of different people, ages and so forth. And I have to say, without leaving anyone out, these young ladies here, since I first met them, they are far the most energetic, eager to get along, and industrious group of young ladies and individuals I've ever worked, my pleniums.
Thank you very much. Last night I had a, I presented an award to an Eagle Scout on the voice, and I am doing the girl side, I think it's really great. I think it's a good sign of leadership in the borough, good clean living, and it's good for them, and I really appreciate what you've done. It's a, it's a certificate, it's got their names on it. It says, Borough of Hightstown Certificate of Appreciation is awarded, is hereby presented to the girls' names are all listed, Girl Scout Troop seven zero one zero five, a recognition for your contribution, beautification, World War Two Memorial Garden, as the Big Rock downtown, right?
Right.
A sincere appreciation for your dedication to the Borough of Hightstown and to its residents, presented this day, the fifteenth day of August, two thousand sixteen, aside by the mayor. Matt, we all listen, and I give you these, or you want to come forward?
(inaudible). Edie Churney. Danielle Cruz. Elizabeth Degoya. Emily Hammett. Chloe Parkins.
Thank you so much.
Olivia Hartman. Jenna Howell. Kate McInnes. Lily Kuzo. Isabel Sabanath. Katie Totten. And Mark Bagren. And the two, Susan Bagren and Jen Degoya.
All right. Canada first. This one is Canada's business, right here? Thank you very much. Thank you for leading these girls in the right direction. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Again, girls, thank you very much. Picture girls, highlight one on the wall. Everybody, do the eight, do the highlight one, get the wall. Fire for them. Next, next we have a letter of appreciation for the gateway sign to coming into Hightstown, I say here. You can tell us more about this. Did you reach out to the school and ask them to?
Well, I can't recreate history accurately, so therefore I'll just plug in the missing information, but many years ago, our Greater Hightstown East Woonster Improvement Project, which I was a longtime member, we thought it was advantageous for community harmony, shall we say, between communities, and we took it upon ourselves to, group took it upon ourselves to have gateway signs, the signs of various entrances of the rug, least the Hightstown, if we would have, find an artist and or painter, and find them both, to repair them when needed. So there was another artist local who was doing it, and then we were without an artist, and great fortune, good luck, and whatever would have it.
Very good. Virginia Nardino?
Virginia Nardino.
Virginia, how you say that?
Nardino.
Nardino?
Yes, Nardino.
Come forward, please.
Thank you.
This is a letter of appreciation, it says to Ms. Nardino, on behalf of the Borough of Hightstown, we would like to express our sincere appreciation for the work you and your art students at Hightown High School did for the refurbishment of the Hightown Borough Gateway Sign, okay?
Thank you.
It means so much to us that the students took time to contribute to the betterment of Hightown. We hope that you share great pride with the residents of Hightown, with the effort you put forth to our students. Thank you again for encouraging our students to give back to the community. We look forward to working with you again in the beautification of Hightown. Sincerely, Larry Patoni, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go home.
We miss you, Mayor. You want to picture them too?
Yeah.
We need a picture here.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Please, sorry. What does this man, oh, here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, folks, if you don't want to stick around, I understand, but this is an exciting meeting. Next, after presentation, we have our, our planning planner, Iden, Fair Share Housing Plan, Tamper Lee.
The planning board is about to embark on rewriting the original housing plan in character. And we've done that a couple of times.
Who does that, Lee?
And we've done that a couple of times, obviously. The last time we did it was June of last year. So, but now we want to redo it, the planning board, because a fairly good idea was, they think they want to put into the housing element, the way this would work, they would describe the new housing element, Fair Share Plan adopted as part of the housing element, that's the master plan process, and then that becomes the affordable housing policy. But since the policy also needs to be implemented by ordinance, and this body does ordinance, it's the planning board asking to come talk to you about the affordable housing policy that they're considering putting into the master plan, to make sure that council agrees with it, and might be willing to consider ordinances to implement it, or if not, do you have any comments or thoughts or suggestions so that they can revise their policy? But they didn't want to adopt an affordable housing policy that you were not willing to implement as ordinance, so we're trying to coordinate with the governing body on that. I sent you a memo dated June seventeen, sort of summarizing the issue, and I'll just go over it very quickly, the existing housing plan that, that we currently have, the one that was adopted in June of last year, included six units on South Academy, that's one habitat house that already, that has been built already, four houses by habitat that I believe are under construction, and you have an agreement with them, you're subsidizing those four units. There's one unit that's been approved for a project known as Ordonez, also on South Academy, so that's four units there. There are three units on William Street, these are three apartments, actually the units aren't there, but there's a site plan approved that includes six apartments, three of which will be affordable, and we would get three bonus credits for those rental apartments. And then, of course, there's another three credits for the Hightown Blue Home, which is a blue home that was de-restricted, and we extended those de-restrictions after they expired. And then we had included in the housing plan of last year, also an overlay zone on South Academy, that we figured could get somewhere between sixteen and eighteen units. That particular option got called into question subsequently, so if there's a question as to how that might work, but for various reasons, including the fact that circumstances have changed since June of last year, the planning board has come up with a slightly revised housing plan, which includes the following. It still includes the habitat homes on South Academy. It includes Ordonez property, but in a slightly different way, which I'll mention in a minute. It also still includes the rental apartments on William Street, which that site plan's already been approved. But the, one of the new things the planning board is considering is possibly a redevelopment plan for South Academy. And that came up as a couple of things. First of all, when the borough, reading its original report that studied neat areas that were in need of redevelopment, which is how we got the redevelopment plan in the rug, that, that report actually identified five different areas, one which was South Academy, so the area's already been identified as an area in need of redevelopment, so it would be easier to take, easier to take the next step and create a redevelopment plan for that area. In addition to that, we know that Habitat for Humanity has a master plan for the redevelopment of South Academy, it's kind of like their, their, their dream for how that might, that area might be redeveloped, so there's at least one party interested. We've also had a few conversations with the housing authority, and they've expressed some interest in possibly coordinating with the borough, if that's at all possible, to become, or to help coordinate with the redevelopment of the area, and that might include South Academy. So it seems to the planning board that there's a couple of potentials, potential opportunities for redeveloping the area, maybe through a couple of different entities, and they at least wanted to explore that, so they wanted to capitalize on the fact that the area's already been identified as an area in need of redevelopment, so they thought of including that in this current housing element. Also, they want to include an affordable infill zoning overlay, when we did vacant land assessment for the borough, we identified six undersized properties, residential properties, and we think we can generate an infill overlay zone for those six properties, so that they can be developed as long as they were developed in affordable housing. Hopefully, the overlay zone will provide sufficient incentive, and there's a couple of different incentives the planning board is thinking about. There's also the possibility of a boarding house within the community, we might get nine units out of that, and we wanted to include that in the current housing plan. And then lastly, again, going back to the conversations that we had with the housing authority, there was some discussion that the ownership of the housing authority may change at some point. The federal government is attempting to divest itself of smaller housing authorities, my understanding is that's actually under two hundred units, and if so, a nonprofit may potentially take over ownership of that. And if that happens, we may have an opportunity to sort of, I don't want to say reconfigure, but reassess how that property is managed, and maybe introduce a few market rate units to help pay for affordable units that would be there. So the way overlay zone would work, it would suggest that if the ownership of that site ever changes, the overlay zone would kick in, and the management of that site could be changed in accordance with that overlay zone. We still have to figure out what the specifics would be for all of these proposals, but that would be done after the housing element is adopted, housing element, like I said, is part of the master plan, so it's just intended to lay out the policy, and then we work on the details when we start working on the ordinance as to implement all these factors. So this is the current meeting of the planning board, and they just wanted your feedback, if you have any major concerns about any of this, or if you have other ideas you want them to consider, then they'd like me to report back to them on that, so that they could get...
And they could get back to you at your office?
Yes, unless you wanted to give me comments here.
Okay. Council have any comments for Tamper Now? Seeing none.
I just, one of the things that jumped out when I read this, I think it's a great idea if we can find the right locations for it, is there's some larger properties in town that have, call it outbuildings or garages behind them, with enough of a buffer around them that if there was an in-mall suite, we put in one of them, that it could possibly qualify as a affordable level unit, and not even be recognized as additional traffic in the neighborhood, and help both the landowner and allow somebody who might want to stay in Hightown but can't afford to stay here, just another type of housing that we don't have. I think the more diverse housing types you have in a town, the better chance in the long run it has of flourishing, so I like to see that. I know in the past, it's been looked upon, because neighborhoods don't want extra people moving in, but I think in the, in the sense that there would be in an existing structure, it wouldn't look any different, and it helps not only the person who would rent, but also the landowner. So I like to see, I like that that's in there as a consideration.
And we might even be able to expand that, I mean, we had it in here as part of this infill overlay zone, but we could potentially look at crafting an accessory apartment ordinance that allows them under certain circumstances, and it sounds like one of the circumstances you probably want to consider is, the, the structure has to be existing, you don't want people building a new, a new garage or something, add into their property in order to get a unit. So probably we'd do anyway because of economics, but you'd want the ordinance to cover that. But if, if that's an idea you like, we can, we can look for ways to expand on that. Am I going to get any feedback, or should, are you going to have comments? Should I tell the planning board this is okay, or should I tell the planning board we're going to wait for comments from council? That's it?
Well, we ready to ask for a change.
It wasn't a change, it was just I liked what I saw.
You want to add it?
Yeah, I think they're on the right track.
Oh.
Yeah. They're tackling it wrong.
If I would, you think I surrender.
So we'll move ahead with this, Tom.
Do you want some more formal, like a resolution, or, or a memo or something, or just word of mouth is okay?
I think I can take it back, we've got planning board representation here, so I want you to take it back.
Official action doesn't need to be taken on this, this is to kind of keep everybody on the same page. Yep. Turn us here.
Okay, sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going into public comment number one. This is the portion of the meeting where the public can come forward and speak, anybody can come forward and speak, but the first public comment is, any person wishing to address the mayor and council regarding matters that are on the agenda will be allowed three minutes for his or her comment on the agenda, anything on the agenda. Come forward and please give your name and your address.
Good evening. Is it on?
Yeah.
(laughing).
You're on.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. Stacy Judge, three zero seven Morrison Avenue. I'm also the chair of the Hightown, the Parks and Recreation Commission here in town. I came before you this evening to talk about something, and place my support and the support of the commission, for something that is on the agenda for later this evening, and that is the smoke-free parks, discussion on the smoke-free parks. About three months or so ago, when we first heard about the possibility of talking about smoke-free areas in town, we did discuss this at Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Everyone was in support of that, and since then, I've come back and actually done some research on things that might be available to us, and the importance of creating a smoke-free areas, specifically the parks. So there's actually a movement, an initiative through the National Park Service called Healthy Parks, Healthy People. And there's some interesting verbiage around that, and also interactive guides, accessible e-guides, resources that will be, that can be accessed if you register as a healthy park. The first thing that you have to do is become a smoke-free park, to register to do that. So there are some things that would open up some resources for us if we were able to register as a smoke-free park, to have smoke-free parks in the borough. I know that the Environmental Commission, they gain points for having smoke-free parks, the Sustainable New Jersey, I believe it is, when they're looking for points for sustainable new, communities that are sustainable, and the Healthy Parks, Healthy People initiative also has, makes you more attractive for grants that might be out there. So I just wanted to voice the support, not only personally, but also from the commission, that we did discuss this and we really support it, and that I think it would also be to our advantage because it may open up some doors. I've worked over the last year and a half with the Robert Johnson Foundation, looking at different healthy, healthy park grants and things that we might be able to, you know, to reach out for in the future, and so I, I think it would just be a positive. Just wanted to let you all know that as you go into discuss it later this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to be too. Barbara Jones, two twenty-three Greeley Street, Chair of Hightstown Environmental Commission. Couldn't ask for better timing to call Stacy, but I'm here about the smoke-free parks. Couple of things from our perspective that are slightly different than hers, one, I have done cleanups in this town for the past fifteen years, and I've got to tell you, the most significant trash item we pick up is cigarette butts. It's distasteful, it's unpleasant for us as cleanup people to have to pick up somebody else's trash that, you know, is in their mouth, it's just pretty disgusting. Second thing is the sustainable jersey aspect. Obviously, we are in dire straits when it comes to getting points for sustainable jersey. We were a thorn in everyone's side, we're asking people, oh, can you get this document, that document? And we're going to be hard pressed to maintain our brand status if we don't start expanding our reach into things that we haven't adapted before, and smoke-free parks will be one of those things. On a personal note, I find smoking in the park diminishes my experience in nature, it's rather an unpleasant odor, so that's a problem. And the other aspect of it is, we in the Environmental Commission recognize that it takes time to change people's behavior. So what we think is, like the anti-idling ordinance that has been on the books for years, limited enforcement, now people are used to it, start enforcing it. Same thing can happen with this smoke-free thing, you know, get people used to it. They don't necessarily have to be ticketed the minute they light up, the first, you know, year or two out of the gate, but let people get used to the idea that our parks are natural spaces, and those natural spaces deserve to be smoke-free. And I think, given that we can give people time, we've given them five, six years for anti-idling, the limited enforcement, I think we could do the same with the smoke-free parks and take our time with it, but now we need to start enforcing the anti-idling ordinance, but that's had time. So that, to me, is the position from the Environmental Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Gene, you got to get banned.
I'm going to need to get banned, I'm listening to all this wonderful stuff.
Jean Ray, four ninety-nine South Main Street. I am the president of the Board of Health, and as such, I want to say that the Board of Health has also discussed this issue of non-smoking in the parks, and we also agree that the parks of Hightown should be made non-smoking for health reasons and environmental reasons, and the link between negative health effects of secondhand smoke on non-smokers has been made years and years ago, there's just no discussing that. It's not open for debate, it's been proven, that is why smoking is virtually banned in all indoor public areas now, and why we should also ban them in outdoor public, shared areas going forward. And as was alluded to, cigarette butts are, according to the Sierra Club, that's just the number one object in sheer quantity and volume of things that are picked up along beaches, along parks, along every area in New Jersey, and the tox, the butts contain toxins like nicotine and pesticides, and those things leach into the water system, and they're ingested by animals and even small children, and the butts, if they're not extinguished properly, cause brush fires, they cause damage, brush fires, they cause damaged picnic areas and historic buildings, there's just all kinds of nasty things that cigarette butts cause. A complete ban on outdoor smoking, or at least in the parks, would not only benefit our health... Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Gene, you got to get fifth.
I'm going to need to get bad, I'm listening to all this wonderful stuff.
Jean Ray, 499 South Main Street. I am the president of the Board of Health. And as such, I want to say that the Board of Health has also discussed this issue of non-smoking in the parks. And we also agree that the parks of Heistown should be made non-smoking for health reasons and environmental reasons. And the link between negative health effects of secondhand smoke on non-smokers has been made years and years ago. There's just no discussing that. It's not open for debate, it's been proven, that is why smoking is virtually banned in all indoor public areas now, and why we should also ban them in outdoor public, shared areas going forward. And as was alluded to, cigarette butts are, according to the Sierra Club, that's just the number one object in sheer quantity and volume of things that are picked up along beaches, along parks, along every area in New Jersey. And the butts contain toxins like nicotine and pesticides, and those things leach into the water system, and they're ingested by animals and even small children. And the butts, if they're not extinguished properly, cause brush fires, they cause damage, brush fires, they cause damaged picnic areas and historic buildings. There's just all kinds of nasty things that cigarette butts cause. A complete ban on outdoor smoking, or at least in the parks, would not only benefit our health, our public health, but our environment in Heistown. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Scott Castor, 12th floor, the wing. I have two comments. First is regarding the minutes. I just want to compliment the style with which they're written. There's two different styles we've seen in last year. There's the Debbie style, and then there's Peggy's style. And they're both great, but there's the distinction between the two. I can't put into words what the distinction is. I think it's a... And I'm not criticizing one over the other. It's just that it's wonderful to see the way these minutes are written. It is, I think, they tell the story very accurately of the meeting. So thank you, Peggy. And regarding the item of the moment, smoking in the parks, I really wonder what the definition of parks is. Does it have to say Memorial Park? Does it have to be labeled Park? Because if you go into downtown Heistown, you know a proponent of downtown Heistown, and that's, I'm marrying downtown Heistown, the business area called downtown Heistown, with this discussion with the cigarettes. If you go down to the lake area, the lake area extends past the traditional Memorial Park geography. And I can't see the difference one over the other, so I'm asking for the geography of the proposal to be expanded, not just to the area around the lake. Take the whole downtown Heistown. If you could look at downtown Heistown as a shopping mall, as a, like the equivalent of a large shopping mall, there wouldn't be smoking allowed indoors in the mall, and probably some of them excluded from outside in the areas in the mall, or schools do too. So what's the difference? There's a gentleman downtown who comes out of his business daily, every couple of hours to have a smoke downtown. And he stands on the entranceway to his facility, and when he gets done smoking, he goes like that, right into the gutter. And I'll be standing across the street from him, and I'll go, again? And he looks at me and he goes, and he points to the drainage culvert. That's where it goes. It goes right down the drainage culvert, it's out of sight. And he talks like this to me. Don't worry about it. Sure, you know, how far can I push the guy? But if you could, in a legal way, expand non-smoking to the entire business district, I think we could attract more shoppers downtown, more business people downtown if we promoted it for smoke-free. And it would be healthier for all the reasons that you heard before. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Go for it, Gene.
Anybody else? You're cheesed out. You get a lot of exercise standing up and down.
I needed it, I needed it.
Jean Sir, 628 South Main Street, Heistown, New Jersey. What if you all show up tonight? This is government acting. We all get three minutes to park. Usually nobody's having anything much more to say than three minutes. Isn't that right? So, why are you having a discussion of smoke-free parks? That's the key. But do me a favor, when you decide to finally do something you should have done 10 years ago, do not put $5 fine because the police don't enforce it. We did studies 30 years ago. You want to enforce things, give them a $5 fine for smoking. Here's a ticket, $5, go pay it. Do it that way. Very, very helpful in enforcing rules. $5 fine? Who's going to enforce a $5 fine? It could be a fine. Now, MOSAP, I disagreed with it, had been involved during my life back in 2000 when John Archer presented it, and I still disagree with it because it's paid volunteers. They're not volunteers, they're paid volunteers. I looked at the list. I charged, that list is fraudulent, and I don't want you to vote on that. I want that list looked at. First aid squad, it doesn't service anybody in town, it's every once a week. Larry, you're giving away $750 to a system, and it's wrong, it's always been wrong, it's designed for the officers, it's not designed... I don't see anybody on that list is a young fireman or a young first-aider. There's always the people that have been there for 50 years, that have their meeting once a month, that sit there, don't ever ride the ambulance, don't ever ride anything. Oh, but they're wonderful, they keep the organization together. Do not vote on that fraudulent list of people. There are people in here whose names are on that list, don't even live in town anymore. That really what bothers me. Look at that list, fireman's list. There are people there who don't live in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Keith Frivos, 213 Greeley Street. A few different things. First off, congratulations on after 18 months, we're finally beginning to talk about affordable housing in public. It's been behind closed doors in an executive session of our planning board and the council for the last 18 months. Affordable housing is an important issue to a lot of people in town. It needs to be a public discussion. And I hope the upcoming planning board meetings aren't all an executive session, and that the public's invited to comment, because other people in town have ideas, and maybe one or two of them are good. My second issue is Resolution 2016-152. We're looking at approving two contracts tonight. One contract is in the packet, it's very well documented, the contract is there, references everything else. The second resolution references a contract where substantial dollars are probably involved, but there's no contract. So is the public ever going to get a chance to look at that contract before you just randomly approve it? Third thing is smoke-free parks. I've been a smoke-free advocate in this town for a very long time. I took the Housing Authority to smoke-free almost three years ago. It's been probably one of the greatest successes we've had. It's worked well for our residents, it's worked well for our neighborhood. We've experienced a real decline in the amount of trash and debris around the Housing Authority, and we're well-known, not only in the state, but across the country, for one of the first housing authorities to have done this. So please approve the smoke-free parks. It's a good start. I'd love to see the whole downtown, the public streets and sidewalks, smoke-free also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Frank Rivera, 110th Street, honorary boy scout, despite my age. I'd like to sit with the girl scouts. And as a former scout, who the heck would be against smoke-free anything? Or apple pie? I have just one request of council, and I may not be able to stay for the discussion. When you get to the discussion of smoke-free, let's think carefully about enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. See, nobody else coming forward?
Maybe the girls, maybe the girls.
Can you go? No, don't be afraid. We don't like it. All right, I'm going to close my comment. I'd love to close my comment further on if you can speak about anything. This is about the agenda. Okay, we have two, Resolution 2016-150, authorizing payment of bills. Everybody received a copy of the bill list. If anybody has any problems with it, please come forward. If not, I need a motion to accept the bill list as presented. So moved by Councilman Stoltz.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mazura. Any questions, concerns? Mabro, please.
Mr. Mount Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Kers?
McStane.
Mr. Mizur?
Yes.
So carried four, yeses, one abstention, zero noes. Resolution 2016-151, authorizing, I'm sorry, appointing and authorizing an agreement for professional services administrative agents of the Borough of Heistown Affordable Housing Program. Rehobah? Rehobah?
Rehobah.
Perhaps?
Perhaps.
Incorporate. Looking for a motion to accept this? So moved by Councilman Kerr. Second. Second by Councilman Blue. Would anybody like to talk about this first? What is the job requirement?
Yes, I think the easiest part to say is that we get involved in affordable housing issues, and it has to be a technical aspect of somebody to pull the income, the guidelines, inspecting properties to see if they comply with the regulations. And this firm of rehabco has that experience, and we are already using them to do the rehab project that we got a grant for last year. So they are becoming very familiar with the neighborhoods in town, so we are recommending for a one-year agreement that they serve as the...
So new job is the KPD.
To make sure we follow the regulations and certify people for the need to rise to satisfy test requirements.
Council, any questions?
I just have, is the word I said, the sentence red-arsed? Or it has the bottom F, the one, it should be one here.
That's correct. I need a few minutes, I missed that word. We'll make that correction.
Make it a goof in the minute.
We were correct there.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Does anybody feel like a smoking at the present time?
You have had people in the past, you did a rehab program in some rehab, it was George...
Community based plan.
Community based plan. That performed it back then.
So there's not, once they've kind of certified, it's compliance, they're just going to follow through, it's not like an odd government?
We don't have, my God, very many where there's rental, and every time there's vacancies, we have to certify the income. To date, there's, if there's any, there's very few I haven't had come forward, but with the boarding house, we're anticipating that there will be vacancies moving forward for that ongoing income there.
Any other questions? I think, I think years ago, when COB first came out, we had a shared service with Ruffin for, so this is a type of deal that that...
I think that's what is possible also is...
Round one or two. How do you have a question?
Do you anticipate longer than three years?
It's going to be a one-year, but we anticipate this going on for as long as we have to have affordable units to get, theoretically, it's a 30-year duty restriction. So over that 30 years, it will be several opportunities to prepare.
So any other questions? Mabro, please.
Mr. Mizur?
Yes.
Mr. Mount Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Kers?
Yes.
We have Resolution 2000, oh, so carried five zero. Resolution 2016-152. A resolution authorizing the Borough of Heistown enter into an agreement with Norman A. Randolph Jr. for the expenditure of the Affordable Housing Fund in order to facilitate the provision of affordable housing units within the Borough of Heistown. Would you like to comment?
Yes, Baron Counsel, the reason that this agreement was not in the public packets is that it was still subject to negotiation, and it wasn't ready at the time the packets were being put together. And as you know, we had a discussion earlier during tonight's executive session about some of the terms and conditions contained in the agreement that's now before you for potential approval. Essentially, for the benefit of the public, the agreement deals with the property located at 278 Academy Street. It's owned by Mr. Norman A. Randolph Jr. It's a rooming and boarding home known as the Randolph Rooming House, and it's comprised of nine separate living units. The Borough and the property owner have negotiated an agreement to include this property into the Borough's updated fair share plan, which Ms. Lee has just gone over earlier this evening. As a site for the provision of affordable housing, subject to certain conditions, the owner has agreed to impose a deed restriction on all nine of the units located at the site for a period of not less than 30 years, so that the units may only be occupied as affordable housing units by income-eligible inhabitants. Seven of the nine would be dedicated to low-income households, and two of the nine would be dedicated for moderate-income households. In return for agreeing to impose these deed restrictions, the owner has sought a contribution from the Borough to underwrite the new affordable units. The Borough has done this in the past with other locations, in particular Habitat for Humanity and the Heistown Group Home. The total amount involved is $102,000, and given that there are nine units that will be restricted for a 30-year period of time, the amount comes to $11,333.33 per unit. And the Borough will make that payment to the property owner once the agreement that's before you has been fully signed, and once the Borough's Affordable Housing Administrative Agent, which I just approved our rehabco to serve in that role, once our rehabco has certified that all nine of the units satisfy prevailing requirements for the Borough to obtain Affordable Housing Credits for them, it's my understanding that in anticipation of their involvement with the Borough in action this evening, that representatives of our rehabco have already reviewed the subject from season, have given a preliminary determination that the units, all nine of them, will qualify, so that the Borough will get Affordable Housing Credit. And finally, once the deed restriction, which is a form document promulgated by the State of New Jersey, is fully executed and recorded with the county clerk's office, at that point, once those three conditions have been fully satisfied, the Borough will then make a payment of $102,000 to the property owner. That's what's contemplated by the city.
Thank you very much. Council, you have any questions? None? See it none? Mabro, please. Oh, sorry, I need a motion to accept, is it 2016-152? Moved by Councilman Kerr? Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mazura. Any other questions or concern?
Mabro.
Mr. Kers?
Yes.
Mr. Mizur?
Yes.
Mr. Mount Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
So carried five zero. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. We have consent agenda 2016-153, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59. I'd like to move them, and one, unless somebody would like to pull something. Anybody like to pull any?
Mayor, I have a question on one, but I don't think we necessarily need to pull it. That's my question.
Was that the question now, or you want to talk about it? Pull it?
Well, we could move them. I was going to...
Move it? I'll second it. Then move the second it? Any questions or concern?
Yeah, my question was on 2016-150 before, just clarifications. That's for the bus service to Prince Junction.
As they're continuing to renew, they may not change any of the various items.
Is this bus, is it just East Windsor and Heistown, or is it... Yeah, there's nothing 134. Okay. It's Prince Junction. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, my one comment is, it's not, I guess the people that use it know about it, but it's not very well advertised. Maybe we can get some information on the website so people know that there is where they stop, time, the community bus from what, need to...
We'll do it.
Is there a charge for it, or is it a free service?
Yeah, it was a dollar code. Yeah, I'm never...
I believe there is a contribution. It makes a mention in here that there is $2,180 at the Borough.
No, I mean, for somebody that rides.
Yeah, it moves to the usual... I forget what, that there's money generated by the...
Yeah, I just like to see if it becomes more...
If there's money generated by the users, does the Borough see it, or is it just a contribution of the Borough Heistown?
I believe when they're calculating what we need to pay for the year, they think that will only work out, and then that will sound like...
Someone should take it down to the senior center.
And it's the same amount of money this year as last year, and I, I believe maybe two or three years in a row now, so with inflation being the way it is, I'm sure that they're generating some income. And I will look it up and...
Yeah, email that though, too.
I don't know.
All right, if that's moved and seconded, any questions to answer? Are there any other comments? I think it's a needed service. Mayor O'Callaghan, please.
Mr. Currie?
Yes.
Mr. Mizur?
Yes.
Mr. Montbarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Lee? Yes.
So carried five zero. Public comment number two. Any person wishing to address the mayor and council at this time will be allowed a maximum of three minutes for his or her comment.
Okay, sir. I told you there were fraudulent transactions to Los Act. Okay, let's go to court, fellas, because I'm going to go after you for approving that stupid Los Act payment. It is wrong. You have contributed to a false payment of services or money to people who did not even qualify for Los Act. You don't listen to the public, do you? Good luck, good luck. You can be that way. You can be like that moron Donald Trump, another idiot in our government, running for office. Now, I won't use any fooling around words to you young ladies, but you know what? He is a moron. Racist, king, that the Republican Party puts up as a candidate, insults everybody, creates hate, talks about, talks about voter fraud in Pennsylvania. If our Republicans hide today, an embarrassment that a party would have a moron like that, a Hitler, running for office. You know, someone has to stand up for every municipality in this state and this country because along with Trump, we've got this governor who should be impeached. But no, no, our Democrats, wonderful Democrats, sweetie, they ain't going to impeach, sweetie, impeach, uh, uh, sprinting. Oh, let us all hang on until the state goes to bankruptcy, so they can defeat the Republicans. We no longer have a government interested in Democrats and Republicans getting elected. We have a government interested in self-interest of people getting themselves elected to hell for what's good for the rest of the state. Young ladies, no one in this state is elected official is interested in the health of this state, except these gentlemen and ladies up here. They are our local representatives who are interested in the state, but not the Senate members, not the senators, and not the governor.
When you have people, people, hope you explain this to them. Anybody else wish to comment?
I'm actually...
Would you like to say it?
I actually have to go.
Okay. Hold on a second. Do you make, thank you.
I'm scared of my language.
Bro, thank you for coming.
Good job.
Change your way half way.
Good job, just getting away.
They got it a whole with this time.
Boy, I wasn't even going to raise my voice today all the time.
Change your way half way.
Basically, those two thirteen, Riley Street. I just wanted to bring up tonight, we've had water issue again at the housing authority this past week. I'm not quite sure how to phrase the response from the water company, but thank goodness Larry Blake came out because, quite frankly, other people I basically threw out of my office to the comments table. This is not a housing authority problem. Larry Blake realizes it. He believes we know where we're going to need to go with it. There's an infrastructure problem. Your employees recognize it, but they throw blame at everybody else, except for a problem because they don't want to mention it. Like I said, thank goodness for Larry, he's a customer service ace. Everybody should take lessons from Larry on how to deal with customers, because we're all customers, we're all in the customer service business.
He's our PR agent.
I'm in the customer service business. I've got two hundred and four people I have to keep happy every single day or everybody hears about. What I do, don't want to have to do, and Larry and I discussed it, is put in pre-filters, pre-filtered precedent. We're planning a major infrastructure upgrade at the housing authority this year, probably spending close to a half a million dollars on pumps, boilers, other infrastructure, and I don't want those ruined by the degree that it's floating on our water system. So think about that. Next time we go to spend a million dollars on a fire truck, let's put some money in the ground. The pipes and the arteries of this borough, we need that, we need them to be clean and we should be, for the price we're charging, delivering clean water to the residents of this borough without them having to do extraordinary measures to filter it after it gets there. The DEP representative that came out is absolutely correct. Water leaving the plant is perfect. Once it gets to your doorstep, it's a different story. I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. I have a question, though. Larry, did you all right?
Yeah. No, Larry and I have very good, spent about an hour today going over several different scenarios and like you said...
I'll have to follow the email. Frank?
Frank Rivera, one ten Broad Street. I just want to be clear, I misspoke the first time on smoke-free environments and I support a hundred percent. Just because we are in a litigious world, however, as I said before, when you address this topic tonight, pay special attention to enforcement, particularly if you feel you want to extend this to other public places, because there could be go-back. So I'm just asking you to put on your analytic caps and think about the other side of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Scott Castell, twelve Cloverland. As you know, my two significant reasons for coming here are taxes and downtown Heights Town. In regard to downtown Heights Town, let me quote Harold Schultz, CEO of Starbucks, who said, "Dream more than others think practical." And I am going to dream more right now, and I'm asking you to dream more with me. He also said, "Expect more than others think is possible." I think more than I believe most people think is possible regarding downtown Heights Town. And I'm asking you to do the same. And finally, he said, "Care more than others even think is wise." And I'm asking you to care more than you, up until now, may have thought was wise. Mr. Mayor, you have done more progressive outreach and attempts at working with downtown Heights Town in the last eighteen months than the last, than we've seen in the last ten years all put together. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not done yet.
And I know you're not done yet. My problem is that you're trying to do it basically yourself instead of including downtown Heights Town in a way that really works and is impactful and reach it out with that dream that I'm trying to speak of or that expectation that is higher than we can even see right now. I applaud you for attempting to find a new place to put taxis. I applaud you for moving a park bench, et cetera. That's not where I'm headed. I have brought these subjects up many times also. I do it with the attempt to start at the bottom and work up. Now I find it necessary to start at the top and work down. My real dream is not about park benches and taxis. My real dream is to bring business back to downtown Heights Town and to make downtown Heights Town the jewel that the rest of the town can be proud of and that property values in town go the way of downtown Heights Town. I don't think that's going to happen at the pace that we're going in the last few months. I don't think it's going to happen. Twenty months from now, you're going to be looking at retirement possibly or at least looking at the end of your term. You go another term, fine, you're not looking at retirement. I don't know where that's going, but I know that there's a downhill point and it's coming. And I'm asking for either you or the rest of the council to put it in high gear. We don't have a business association that represents unity downtown. We don't have an EDC. We don't have an interaction with the state of New Jersey, with the Main Street program. We don't have any management downtown. And in conclusion, if you think that we have no business, if municipal government has no business in downtown Heights Town, you all have spent millions of dollars in the last few years downtown. You voted on approval of payments tonight, including payments for downtown. I can go on and on and on. I can make a very strong case why you should be very severely interested in downtown and why, up until now, we're very lacking. But time is short, so I'm going to sit down. I've got plenty of fodder for the future, but I wish it weren't necessary to come up here weekly or every other week and talk this way. Thank you.
See, nobody else coming forward on closing public comment number two?
Good evening. Milton Matamoros at one thirty-five, Thirty Street. I just have a one simple question and that goes to the mayor and everyone in here. What are we doing against illegal immigration so that every single topic that has presented tonight comes a reality? You know, we have to, we need a cultural change in here. I see a lot of people, they're Hispanic, I'm Hispanic, and that they smoke and they throw cigarettes anywhere they like. I see Hispanic people drinking and throwing bottles everywhere they like. So we also need to approach that in a cultural approach so that everyone understands that they're not longer in Mexico, they're not longer in Honduras, they're not longer in Ecuador, they're, they're, they're in America now. So there needs to be a cultural change and they need to understand that. Because that's also a part of that and I applaud trying to change that. Somebody needs to do it one way or another. I've been to Echo Park, sometimes there's Corona bottles all over the place, cigarette bottles all over the place. I went to the high school to play tennis with my kids and I see Corona bottles, cigarette bottles all over the place. Believe me, I'm Hispanic, I'm Republican, and sometimes people think I'm racist. I'm not racist, I just want a better tomorrow for my kids. And it needs to be a drastic cultural change in people's mentality if they want to reside in the United States of America. That's one. But mainly, I would like to know, what are we doing against illegal immigration? If we want to change downtown as he proposes, you know, we need to, we want to bring new business to downtown, there needs to be a change in demographics as well. If we're planning a million, two million dollars change of apartments right here, are we going to give them to, are we going to change the demographic to make sure that we enhance Heights Town to be more like Princeton? Or are we making a change on Heights Town to be more like Trenton or French Street in Brunswick? What are we doing? Where are we heading? What is our vision? I live here and I really see the change over the years. We're going from bad to worse in a reality that we're not enhancing our town. I live here, I consider myself a true Highstonian, and I really would like to see Heights Town bright more than what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, sir. I didn't catch your name, I apologize.
Milton Matamoros.
Thank you. See, nobody else coming forward. I'm closing public comment number two.
It's not federal.
Now we're going to go into discussions about smoke-free, smoke-free parks. As you know, we spoke to you a lot about it in public comment. Now it's counsel's turn to beat it up and talk about it, see what direction we'd like to go in. This is not a binding thing, this is just a discussion. And when counsel finally makes up its mind which way it'd like to go, it'll come out in the form of an ordinance and it'll be voted on. Who would like to kick it off? Lee, man, how about you?
Thank you, Mayor. Having discussed this briefly before and thought about it at length since and traveled over, traveled out of state, Minnesota for a week and seen how it's like other places. My original opinion...
Would you like the microphone?
My, my original opinion was more about not wanting to control people, but I've seen how it's, how it is when it's done right in other states. Minnesota being a pretty progressive state, we go all along the front parks and their urban areas, their urban parks and I never, I mean, just as a whole, I didn't see anyone smoking out there. I mean, I don't know how they do it out there. Not as many people live on top of each other than we have here in Heights Town in New Jersey. I'm not personally a smoker. I have relatives I've lost to smoking. I was on the fence with this before, not wanting to intrude on people's lives, but you know, I think more people's lives are affected by wanting to go take a walk in the park and have a clean place to breathe. I'm leaning the other way now and would be in support of some type of enforcement on this or an ordinance on this. I agree with Mr. Rivera who's brought up that the key component of this is going to be enforcement. I also like, I think it was, was it Barbara Jones who mentioned earlier about limited enforcement, you know, you don't want to beat people over the head right away. But it seems like a logical step in trying to improve our downtown and our parks and raising the bar in Heights Town. I would now be in support of smoke-free parks.
Thank you.
Just, you know, figuring out the enforcement of it and I assume we've spoken with the chief and had input on that, but that's, that's what I would, that's where I'm at now.
Mr. Currie?
I still have some severe reservations about this. When I looked through the draft proposal and the third whereas statement, sentence, you know, public interest that we, that the borough gets involved, I don't know if it's necessarily true that the, that it's a government interest in dictating what other people do and the choices that they make. The next whereas statement talks about children should be exposed and succumbing to the temptation of experimenting with tobacco products. I think this one is probably the most troublesome paragraph that I've seen in this proposed draft. I don't think it's necessarily a government function to be necessarily protecting children from experimenting with tobacco products. At what point are parents actually responsible for what the children will see? What about the ice cream truck when it comes through town? You know, there's problems with diabetes and high levels of sugar and preservatives that are in many of those ice cream products and we need to ban ice cream. I hear the arguments about wrappers, cigarette wrappers, cigarette packs, cigarette butts in the, in the parks, but what about all the other things? Soda cans, beer bottles, ice cream wrappers, the sticks from the ice cream cone, there are many other things that are discarded into the parks. And I think we have ordinances about litter. Ordnance fourteen dash six point one and fourteen dash eight both talk about disposal of litter, both talk about the enforcement that we have. And if there's an enforcement issue, maybe that's the approach we need to take. We've heard Mr. Rivera talked about and Ms. Jones talked about the enforcement aspect of it. We already have two ordinances on the books regarding litter and maybe that's what we need to address rather than controlling what some of the choices that people make. I have, what about food that's served when we have the Harvest Fair? Some people are concerned about meat products and whether or not it's torturous to animals to be using their carcasses for food. That's not a position everyone takes, but you know, are we going to worry about people serving food at their, what about the carcinogens that people leave comes when you barbecue food? We have barbecues that are in grilled foods at the Harvest Fair. I just have too many concerns about the control of other people, the government intervention, as well as the particular language that's in this proposed draft. In section one, under definitions, parts and recreation, I think the definition itself is problematic. Would this mean that there are no parking and there's no smoking in parking lots such as the parking lot next to the lake? What about within your car inside the parking lot next to the lake? We heard people talk about restrictions in the schools. I think that's a different situation, but nonetheless, there's no smoking even in the parked car on school grounds. How far are we going to take it? I don't think the definition in this draft ordinance really explains it. Or do people have to extinguish their cigarettes before they enter the parking lot? We heard comments from the public about banning it on the sidewalks. I don't think it would necessarily improve shoppers or foot traffic in the borough, it might actually chase people away, because not everybody is as health-conscious as another. I think it might, it might cause additional problems. I also see on the smoking definition, talks about the electronic cigarettes. I did a little bit of research on electronics, and I'll make it clear, I am a former smoker, I quit more than 18 years ago, and I haven't had a puff from a cigarette since. From my understanding, there's just no tobacco in the electronic cigarettes. So if it's tobacco we're trying to prevent the use of, why are we worrying about the vapor from the electronic cigarettes, which is simply the nicotine, from what I understand? Or is it that we're trying to teach the children, the government teaching the children that they should be given exposure to cigarettes? I understand there's health considerations for smoking, but there's health considerations for most things we do in life. Tattoos have health considerations. Are we going to ban people from displaying tattoos in these parks because it might encourage children to get tattoos? I really don't like the way this has been written. If we are looking truly for a smoke-free, because that's the environment we want, that's one thing, but the language within this proposed draft, I think just takes things too far.
Thank you. Thank you. Rest all my concerns. Thank you. You sure listen.
Dean, my position is unchanged, I've always been in favor of this. You know, I say this simply as, you know, somebody wants to enjoy the park, somebody wants to take their kids there, they shouldn't, you know, they shouldn't have to be subjugated to cigarette smoke or cigar smoke. The park's for the enjoyment of all, and if any place should be smoke-free, I think it's a public park. And I don't think, you know, we could get hung up on the enforcement and all that, but I think what this will do is it will enable us to put up a sign, and if somebody's pushing their kid on the swing set and the person next to them's smoking a cigarette, they could say, "Do you mind not smoking?" And then they have a sign going, because this is a smoke-free environment. I don't think it's, I don't think we're going to have, you know, the police, you know, going on smoke-stay deaths or things like that. I think it's just, you know, it's just a common sense thing, you know, I think parks should be smoke-free. A lot of good reason for giving by our various commissions. In terms of some specifics in the language, with the electronic smoking devices, maybe we look into that more, whether they necessarily have to be banned, because that's, that's something smokers that are trying to kick the habit and use. And I guess we will, in some ways we want to encourage people to use those rather than smoking cigarettes or cigars. The other, the other area where I might have some concerns is where, and I think Seth hit upon this, is including all areas adjacent to such facilities. I could see a scenario where, you know, somebody has to have their cigarette, their kid's at the park, so they step onto the sidewalk, and they're not violation, still keep their eye on their kids. You know, we might, we might, you know, this is kind of broad, when they say all adjacent areas, it's not really, doesn't really define where it stops, so. But in general, I would support this, I think, you know, I think we should make the parks smoke-free. Jean brought up the fine, you know, what are we saying, a hundred dollars, a $200 fine? That's new to me, maybe, maybe there is something to consider, it might be a question for the police, would they be more apt to enforce it if it's a simple $25 fine or something like that? I don't know, but maybe that's something worth looking into. Those are my comments. I'd like to see us keep moving forward on this.
Yeah, my position is also remained unchanged. Speak up. Always speak up for you, Scott. My position is remained unchanged. I've always been in favor of smoke-free parks. I'm very happy that some representatives from our commissions came out tonight, Barbara, Jean, thank you, Keith, and Stacy was here earlier. My, you know, I'm not trying to nitpick with you, Seth, but, I mean, 1922 Penn Colt, okay, it was a case about a woman living near an industrial factory, and that was like one of the first cases that came up, about how breathing industrial air was a public health and a public nuisance violation. Right. So, I think there's a strong case, as there always has been, for government intervention for public health. The next whereas clause about preventing children from being exposed to smoke or tempting smoking tobacco products, well, we had a program in place for over a decade or two decades, it's called DARE. And then, you know, I think you're nitpicking with the littering, but that's a huge issue with the cleanups in town. And yeah, there isn't, there hasn't been enough enforcement. Seeing goes to the language, and your electronic smoking device, yeah, it is, like Steve said, a reason why people try to kick their habit of smoking, but it still contains a little nicotine in it, so they still get the best. Yeah, I think I agree with you though about the language about the adjacent area of the sidewalks, but yeah, I respectfully disagree with your position against the smoke-free parks. And yeah, I talked extensively at length with this issue with the Board of Health, and they all feel pretty strongly about it. And I know Stacy spoke with me about it, the Parks and Recreation Commission feels pretty strongly about it. It's common sense.
Thank you very much, sir.
And these signs can be, I think, almost free for towns. That's another positive.
Mr. Blue, the floor here.
To avoid any perception of a conflict of interest, and after consulting with our attorney, I am choosing to refrain from participating in this discussion.
Okay. I can't hear you. What do you think? Be personally...
To avoid any perception of a conflict of interest, and after consulting with our attorney, I have decided to refrain from participating in this discussion.
That don't make sense.
Okay. I was a smoker, I quit over 40 years ago, very proud of that. Don't like leaning on people, telling people what to do, except when it bothers other people. If it bothers other people, it's different. Want to smoke in your own home, fine, but if it bothers your wife, I think you got a problem. Smoking in the park, you got children playing in the park, you got litter problem, so I am for a smoke-free environment. I know they don't allow smoking on the beaches anymore, which is nice, because people just sit and bury their cigarettes, then when the kids go there to play, they end up digging up cigarettes, you know? But obviously, this ordinance we have is going to need a little bit of cleaning up. So, I guess I'm charging our attorney with your permission to clean up this ordinance and come back with an ordinance that's acceptable, and one we can work with. Council agrees with that?
I can just say, I like that it spells out the exact park names.
No smoking.
And that's a good one. Like, this is a good one.
I think if we put containers out for people, put cigarettes in, it's only going to promote smoking, so I agree with you.
What about rural-owned property downtown? Rural-owned property?
Parks and recreation. We're going to work from there and maybe broaden it, we'll see how things work out. You know, I think it's easier to nibble than it is to stop. That's my first opinion. Anybody got any questions about that? I don't want to change anybody from there.
On that subject, I think we should just keep this limited at first. You know, there was the comment about people getting used to an ordinance, I think we should just limit it to specific parks. Expanding it to rural-owned property, public property, that's, I think, that's a reconsideration in the future. Let's start, let's start.
So let's rework the ordinance, and we'll bring an ordinance up that we can beat up a little bit, all right?
One counter, I just think to respond to this, my part, is that their program is an educational program, not a controlling program. It's a bit different, I think.
I know. Thank you. Okay. That's the end of our discussion period. We're going to go into, I don't think we have any subcommittee, do we have any?
I don't have any comments. I did ask Mr. Ryan after, I think, our last meeting, his question about where are we staying within the finances, so he's...
Yeah, where are our finances for this year?
Being at mid-year.
Where do we sit? How are we doing?
Yeah, I'm going to add some reports out this week. Shows, you know, how things are going through the year, and at least...
Get a mic.
Okay. I have some reports coming out later this week. I was hoping to have for tonight, but I still have a couple things with it, so I will have this week.
Okay.
Through July and then...
I think council wants to just know where we sit compared to last year with our budget?
Yeah. I'm getting those out.
All right. All right, council? Good to know. We're going to go to mayor, council, administrative reports. We'll start over here with Lee Stoltz again.
Thank you, Mayor. The, we had, the mayor and I, as Scott has been at several of these, we had a business meeting Monday, last Monday, was at my office. I got to the office late, and hoped that, when I got there, there was no one there, I hoped that no one had shown up and turned away. However, five minutes later, Ken Roy from Morgan's showed up, and as did Leslie Covel. Ken Roy's his first meeting, very ambitious, very excited about things that can happen downtown, much to what you've been talking about, Scott. So that was encouraging, to see him show up for the first time and have all these, have all these ideas, and want to take the reins almost, in terms of connecting with the businesses that haven't been there yet, in terms of promotion. He spoke a lot about promoting the downtown and, you know, cross-pollination of businesses and restaurants, so it was a very encouraging meeting. He said he was going to be here to talk about another issue, but he, I guess, was just street, but that was, he'll probably be at another council meeting for that. So, we're going to continue having those monthly meetings. There was discussion in front of his business with the right-hand turn off of Mercer Street, paying to buy, people drive way too fast.
Thank you, Steve.
Probably the widest intersection in town. It was done so because that's the truck route, but I think you're putting your life in your hands when you're trying to cross that street to go toward the post office from Morgan's and that side of town, because it's a blind corner as well. And he mentioned possibly looking at one of the parking spots closest to that corner. Cars getting hit all the time, that if we removed one parking spot from that corner, would open up the visibility for both drivers and pedestrians, as well as eliminating the numerous vehicles that apparently get hit there. But he asked that the council and the engineer, at some time in the future, hopefully near future, begin to look at that intersection as a part of a bigger downtown, getting the sidewalks and streets back for pedestrians, instead of being controlled by vehicles. So, get a lot to say on many levels, physical and emotional. So that was exciting to hear. The construction and zoning office continues to move ahead with re-inspections. George promised me he would have my report tonight, but he emailed me before I got here, it's not ready. But we're well ahead of last year's amount, from what he's told me. Several repeat violators of things like interior padlocks on doors inside someone's house. We saw what happened on Hauser Avenue with the chained-up basement door. Apparently, there's been a possible another violation at that same house, with the people that moved back in there. So, they're on top of it. Not going to let something like that happen again, not only put the residents in danger, but people like Harry back there, and police, fire that show up to those calls. So, it's just more encouraging news from that department. They're going to also continue to look at, Scott, you had mentioned at some of our business meetings and as well as council meetings, about signage downtown. The A-frame signs have already, you've already probably noticed that they're being cleaned up. Some people are choosing the perpendicular sign over the A-frame sign. I know several have actually replaced their A-frame sign, so, you know, it's a big boulder, it takes a lot of people to push it, and it's starting to move. But the next thing that George would like to look at, and coming through planning board, was the actual signage redoing, revisiting storefronts again to look at the signage that's in the windows and displays, like we did way back when Harry was here. Sort of let it slide for a while, it'll be time to revisit that. And then downtown Hightstown had a board meeting last week, talking about some of the things that the business group did, about promotional ideas, collecting interested parties downtown to come up with some kind of literature to hand out to the McRae Hills, the larger employees, employers of the area who might not be coming downtown for lunch during the day. Some kind of lunch special, and getting the word out, trying, you know, "We're open for business, we're open for lunch downtown, you know, here's, here's something that'll get them down here," some kind of promotional, maybe discount thing that's been kicked around. So, ideas to sort of raise the bar and bring people back downtown on different levels, both from a code enforcement as well as a promotional. And lastly, I don't know if anyone else is going to talk about this, but I did get approached outside, been following this since the last ride, but this Saturday is America's 9/11 Foundation, the last ride that they're going to be doing. If you've never seen this, it's quite a spectacle. I was told by Paul downtown, or downstairs before the meeting, there's people coming from as far away as Indiana. Actually, people fly their bikes in from Australia to ride in this ride. They estimate between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock, they'll be in Hightstown. But just come on downtown, Home Depot apparently donated a bunch of flags, so you can come wave the flag and support. It's an amazing thing to see, just line up, line the streets and all the supporters riding through town. It's quite a special honor to have them come through Hightstown. In fact, they've said that they actually enjoy coming through town, because it's, you know, the people are so close to the riders, and you can shake hands, and so I encourage it. Encourage everyone to spread the word about it. I know that Paul's been trying through his Facebook page, Downtown Hightstown blasted out, he's also on the sign down here in front of the firehouse. Come out and check this out if you haven't seen him, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I'll kind of tag on to what you just said. I'll actually be riding my motorcycle through town on the America's 9/11 ride this Saturday, after watching it for years. One of the coordinators finally convinced me to join in, I'll be doing a ride from Delaware to New York City. I'll be the one wearing the American flag and motorcycle home. Two weeks ago, we had National Night Out, it was an excellent turnout for this year's event. The weather was somewhat accommodating, not too hot or rainy. Everyone that came out seemed to have an excellent time enjoying the fest. David Easter, there was fire personnel, EMS personnel, and of course, the police department had staff there as well. There were vendors, there was free food for everyone, free amusement rides, music and dancing with the DJ, as well as some free raffle prizes this year. Certainly encourage everyone to come out next year when we have the event in August as well. Last week, we had, the Hightstown Police Department held its promotion and swearing-in ceremony. The chief of police was sworn in unceremoniously, as well as two sergeants and three police officers that were recently hired. In attendance were two retired police chiefs from Hightstown, the current Hightstown police officers were in attendance, officers from around the state, as well as from New York. Along with representatives from the FOP, family and friends were in attendance, it was certainly an excellent, wonderful evening. And congratulations to all those that were promoted or recently sworn in. EMS has no reports to provide this one.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jordan?
Thanks, Mayor. Couple general comments, reaction to things I've heard tonight. You know, with regard to the infrastructure in this town, the old water mains, you know, some of these water mains are 75 years old, if not older. And since I've been on council, I think every year, we have replaced water mains. It's an ongoing project, it's going to be going on as long as there's a...
And since I've been on council, I think every year we have replaced water mains. It's an ongoing project. It's gonna be going on as long as there's a Hightstown. We're gonna be having to upgrade deteriorating water mains. It's not like when we buy a fire truck, we ignore something else. The fire truck should have been replaced ten years ago. But, but every time there's a road project and the road gets opened up, we do borrow money, because usually the grant funding doesn't cover the water main aspect or the infrastructure aspect. You know, we have to, we have to finance that ourselves, and there's just so much we can finance at a given time. So, this is something we're, we're concerned about. It is, is an ongoing, ongoing project, I call it. You know, with the downtown, you know, again, you know, Hightstown's downtown didn't get to, you know, the state it is in overnight, you know? You know, through the seventies, the eighties, you know, there was a, there was a decline in downtowns due to the malls, later on, the big box stores that they had to compete with. So, you know, this is, it's not a unique Hightstown problem, and it's not a problem that happened overnight. But I think we're also seeing improvements in the downtown. When I moved into, you know, I'd lived in the area almost my whole life, but when I actually moved to Hightstown in the late nineties, there were a lot less restaurants to go to. There's at least three, you know, three new restaurants, great restaurants, that weren't there before. And it's the small businesses that are gonna drive it. And, you know, our job is to support and encourage them in any way we can. So, you know, I don't think it's all doomed and gloom. I don't think we're gonna solve this thing overnight. It's something we inherited. I'm a senior council member here. I've been on council for less than three years, you know? This is...
On your fault.
Yeah, yeah, right? So, so we're working at it. In terms of specific things, Planning Board had a meeting last Monday. One, one question that came up was the Minute Maid property. There was a settlement a few years ago. They're able to operate their business out of there, but it was supposed to do certain improvements in terms of the appearance, the access in and out. And that's been tied up with DOT. The latest report I got from Carmelo was that all the DOT concerns should be resolved, and they're just waiting for a permit now. So, hopefully, you know, once we hear that they got the permit, then we don't have any more excuses, basically. But that'll finish, finish their upgrades and we can kind of keep on top of it for that. The other thing that, just to keep you updated on what Planning Board's doing, was an informal application for multifamily, you know, three-unit, four-unit building or apartment that would go on a property that's actually on Stockton and Church. They would, I guess, subdivide the property, kind of create on Church Street access to a, what they proposed was a two-story, three or four, four-unit small apartment complex. You know, with these informal applications, we really don't give them too much, we can't really give them too much direction. There really wasn't nothing to say whether it's a good project or not, but I just want you to be aware that that's something that's out there that, that might be moving forward. I think that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Blue?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank the Girl Scouts for coming out tonight. It was very nice that they showed up. I think we should have definitely more presentations like that at the beginning of meetings. Just to tag on what you were saying, I was at that event last week, a Business Professionals event, and one company, the company that was hosting, the figure said that they order from Hightstown restaurant every Friday, and it's like their go-to place to go to. And that just put a huge smile on his face, knowing that it's a newer business too, that they go to every Friday, the whole company orders different, you know? Which is a good thing. And then I, and then I talked to someone else at the event that said they go to another newer restaurant, Hightstown, and it's one of their favorite spots in the state. In the state, you know, emphasis on that. So, I, I think it's come a long way, even in my lifetime too. It's a lot shorter than yours, but... So, yeah, the promotional event on Thursday was great. It was good to see Chief General sworn in. The Latino Festival has been moved twice now. We're actually looking to have it on August twenty-seventh now, with the Parks and Rec now having approved, approved the new date. Blomonger mid, so... The Harvest Fair Committee is meeting tomorrow night. Our volunteer meeting is happening at six PM, so, and then the formal committee meeting's at seven. So, if you'd like to tell people in town, the volunteers to come out, that'd be great, at the six PM at OGP Architects. And then my last comment is just about the smoke-free parks again. I think the state made a really partisan political mistake by just mandating that the state parks and beaches would be smoke-free and leave it up to the municipalities. I think that's an old political, you know, tool or game that politicians like to play. So, I'm glad that we get to take this, you know, the right stand and put smoke-free parks, or, you know, hopefully have smoke-free parks in the future.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Blue, out of Congress, hold your axe. Go ahead, say it, please.
That's going down. I'll start off with cultural arts. Two weeks ago, Theater and Park production took place. Unfortunately, due to the rain, it couldn't be in the park. It was held here. What a wonderful event. Kudos to the children and the staff. This is the third year of this program. It is absolutely fantastic. This year, they put on a parody of The Odyssey. It was a story. Program that I hope goes on and on, E. G. R. L. gives very involved. Cultural Arts had scheduled a fundraiser for this Wednesday called Merlot and Morne. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough interest, so the event has been canceled. However, they are planning a fundraiser, a Halloween costume party, Sunday, October thirtieth, here at the firehouse, as I have more details as to price, food, et cetera. I will pass that on. And Parks and Rec liaison to the Cultural Arts Commission had to step down due to her work schedule. We now have a new liaison from Parks and Rec to Cultural Arts, and that's Michelle Jordan. As to Parks and Rec. Farmy's Market got off to a slow start. It's on Thursdays. It has now picked up. It's great. Everybody, please come out. Penny Lake is being used on Fridays and Saturdays to be open water swim. As Connor mentioned, Saturday, the twenty-seventh, is Latino Festival at Rockford Park. Since they had two prior rain-out cancellations, they do have a rain alternative. However, I understand it is summer inside, therefore, Parks and Rec isn't involved, and I don't know where or when.
Hightstown, Mr. Blue.
Thanks, Matt. And lastly, Triathlon will take place this year on Sunday, September eleventh. You already have many applications. About where they were last year at this time, they're not a little ahead, and it's a great event. If you're not gonna participate, please get a roll and watch. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Henry?
Sure.
Anything you gotta tell them?
The, the follow-up is a quick look at the finance. Any case thinks you would be, where we would be at mid-year, so I'll let Mr. Wang document that.
Thank you. You have anything more? Come on, the clerk has to say something.
No, I don't have anything.
George? Nothing that I have? Brett?
Come here.
All right. I guess that leaves me. Well, like I said earlier, I presented a recognition to the Eagle Scout at the VSW. It was very interesting, big crowd. The Girl Scouts coming forward tonight is icing on the cake. They have been working very hard with the borough. They work with Gary a lot. And the enthusiasm, when I was down there watching them work. "Mr. Grubbs, is this how you're doing? Mr. Grubbs, is this how you're doing? Mr. Grubbs, is this okay?" I mean, it was just wonderful. The Blue Ribbons downtown. Maybe Steph will pump in with that one. But I have designated downtown Blue Ribbons for police appreciation for the rest of this month. Next month, we're gonna go into the Teal Ribbon, which is over ovarian cancer awareness, I think it was, right? By, by Assemblyman Mensah. They will be put up by his group. So, if you see a police on the street or something, tell them to appreciate their work. They work hard. I mean, what I read in the news, see in the news, it's hard. I mean, I can't even believe this happened. I almost wanted to have a moment of silence this evening for police officers that are falling in line of duty. I'm believing. But I thank all for coming out tonight. Jane, if somebody wanted to pull out the Lozapp, I would encourage them to pull it out and talk about it. But council is okay with it, so that makes it okay. I want a motion to adjourn. Moved by council, I'm sorry.
Seconded by council.
Roll call. Everybody say aye.
Aye.
No nay. We are now adjourned. Thank you.